Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegocounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register, and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda item's recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. I will now call the May 21, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Meeting to order. Ryan, please call the rule for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Anderson.
Here.
Supervisor Montgomery Stepp.
Here.
Supervisor Desmond.
Here.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer.
Here. Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with non-agenda public communication. As a reminder, this is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within our jurisdiction, but not an item on our agenda today. The only action we may take is a referral to our CAO. As a reminder, under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication. That would be either at yesterday's session or today's session, but not both. Speakers may select which at their convenience. In order to best facilitate the meeting, we have five speakers in person and five speakers by phone for non-agenda public comment. At the beginning of the meeting, the remainder will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, any discussion item with 10 or more speakers individuals will have one minute to share their opinion. As a reminder, according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will receive twice the allotted time for their comments. And as a final reminder, according to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be asked to leave. Thank you. Ryan, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 16 total requests to speak, seven individuals in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers, and we'll now randomly select the first five speakers in person. All the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. As your name is called, if you can please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium, you'll then have two minutes to address the Board. And if you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the first three individuals: Cesar Javier, Timothy, I believe it's Sinef, and Priti Javier.
May we request some interference, please?
Yeah, you can come forward in any order. That's fine.
Good morning. I am Priti Javier, victim of poison gas from ceramic scale. I will read you our community issue as follows. August 27, 2024, the city mayor, city council members, city attorney, city development services department, city planning department, San Diego-- I'm sorry. San Diego Police Department, City Land Use and Environment Group, to whom it may concern we, the residents of Choyas Parkway, Lea, Streamview, Salta, Boise, Mina, Limona, 51 First Streets, West Bank of Choyas, Creek of District 9, certified and report that a home business 5238 Streamview Drive, ceramics manufacturing, and count industrial operation has been operating since December 17, 1984, and renewed December 31, 2024 in our community designated as residential zone. Ceramic scale industrial activity is known to produce toxicity, polluting the air we breathe, and impacting health and safety of residents.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, County University. Mommy Steve Montgomery, please listen. Mom Reamer, Air Commission Board Representative to the Air Pollution Control District. Cesar Javier, advocacy for clean air, clean water, clean food, clean neighborhood, safe neighborhood. Proposition 59, please tell us-- tell us, disclose to us, why is this happening? Proposition 65, tell us what is hazardous in our community. We have the SEQA-- pronounce it any way you like-- California land use and planning laws, California environment and land use laws, all for decent home and suitable surroundings. Air Pollution Control District, Mom Reamer, you are one of the governing board members. And then Counselor Rivera, your protege, Mom Montgomery. He is a political virus, like COVID, spewing virus in our city. Look at what our city is now. You enter the front door, urine. You enter the back door, urine. You enter the right door, urine. All around is urine. Empty space is supposed to be for our-- oh my God. Air pollution failed in addressing Tijuana River. How much more in our small community underserved, economically disadvantaged community? Air pollution used their nose and instrument only in July of 2024. Why that long? Why that wasted time? And now you do not even know what's happening to the distribution. Air purifier worth 2.7 million? I'm sorry. This is my government. Let's wake up.
Thank you. And again, calling Timothy. Not seeing Timothy, so we will go ahead and remove and call the next three speakers, which would be Ilka Weston, Joel Kramer, and Dorothea Flanagan. Unless Timothy's here.
I'm here.
You're here. You're Timothy. So Dorothea, we'll need you to-- sorry. You won't be a part of that first group.
Okay. Thank you. And I have a handout for each one of you. And I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of breath. But thank you, Deputy Clerk. Thank you, everybody. June 7, 2023, I woke up from a vision to both a solution and exit strategy to San Diego City and county homelessness. And let me say, whether we embrace this solution and exit strategy now, it'll be necessary to implement in the future as homelessness and encampment gets worse and worse. Mark my words. You see, right now, we may have as many as 35,000 to 40,000 homeless in our city and county. We have people in parking lots here, parking lots there, hotels here, motels there, cities here, sidewalks there, streets, canyons, and Caltrans hillsides. You see, there's no accountability in all this mess. Though there are many homeless people on drugs acting crazy, we still have many people who are homeless who want to go back to work. We have tons of service jobs just waiting at $20 an hour. But with everybody everywhere scattered, there's no accountability for counselors to really help multiple people at once with information and job applications. Now, my plan calls for the same federal, state, local, and donation dollars we're using now. In fact, once this plan is implemented, we will even use less monies than we are now. Here's the plan and exit strategy solution to alleviate and eliminate homelessness and encampment. It'll be to bring everybody to the City of Hope. It will be located on 425 acres in southeast Oti. Now, if you recall, four or five years ago, federal government transferred 600 acres.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's your time.
Thank you.
Ilka Weston, Joel Kramer. All right, not seeing Ilka or Joel in the chamber. We'll go ahead and move on to the final two speakers, which would be Dorothea Flanagan, and I believe it's Nick, and I believe it's Littis. Littis?
Good morning, honorable Board of Supervisors. I'm here because I have solutions, or I'd never come before you. There's a real problem with the way Public Works road department did East Vista Way from the city limits of Vista out to Gopher Canyon Road, which is seriously needed for traffic flow. There was a dummy lane created, plus a manhole sticking out there that they couldn't make a full lane. The dummy lane is here. It's the turn to go to Ormsby, and there's only like two people that live on that-- two or three, if I'm a liar. This runs probably a mile, and that's how long the backup is every time people try to go home from work. It's just horrible. Everybody knows about it. Kelly McGraw interfaced with somebody who was on the road department at the time this widening was done. Maybe 1 in 100 cars would use this-- they call it the dummy lane. It should be-- the cars go on the dummy lane, and this lane, they can go right instead of going to Route 76. It looks like they tried to go around a manhole or something. This needs to be a full lane. This is not something new. We've been suffering with this for about two years now. It's ridiculous. If you're all about traffic flow, like we are, get them out there instead of putting rumble strips all over the county to make noise on everybody's lives. They get these ideas, and I don't know where from. But if I may approach to give you this--
Oh, you can give it to the deputy clerk, actually. Thank you. And then we'll go to our--
Real quick, Morali from Department of Public Works. Dorothy has agreed to get in touch with you on this. Thank you.
You know something? That doesn't even work.
And then our final speaker, Nick. Not seeing Nick in the board chamber either, so we'll go ahead and move to our callers, those that requested to speak by phone. And again, in accordance with the Board's rules, we will be hearing from the first five callers. The remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hi, good morning. My name is Madison, and I'm here today to express deep concern about the growing harms associated with cannabis, both in our communities and beyond. According to the DEA's 2025 National Drug Threat Assessment, states that permit the sale of marijuana, including California, are unintentionally providing cover for dangerous transnational criminal organizations. Partels, particularly Chinese and other foreign networks, are exploiting loopholes in our legal frameworks. They're registering seemingly legitimate businesses here in California, then operating illegal grow operations that defy production limits, bypass licensing requirements, and engage in crimes like money laundering and human trafficking. While permitted states like ours are being used as funds, the illicit marijuana they grow is trafficked into prohibition states, fueling a nationwide black market. California and counties like ours become central hubs in this illegal pipeline. Meanwhile, enforcement struggles to keep up due to inconsistent laws, regulatory gaps, and the sheer volume of operations. We are also seeing stronger, more potent cannabis linked to mental health issues, particularly among young people, including psychosis and suicide. This is not the safe, regulated industry that was promised. That is why today I urge the Board to oppose any expansion of cannabis retail in San Diego County. Approving more dispensaries will only deepen the regulatory burden, increase the risk of front operations for illegal trafficking, and send a dangerous message to youth that cannabis is harmless. It's not. Let's pause, reassess, and put public health and safety first. Do not allow more cannabis retail outlets to open in the county. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Go to our next speaker.
Audrey Reynolds. I'm saddened and angered that my repeated appeals to you on behalf of the animals in San Diego County, they go unheard. Vaughn Maurice watched a major investigation at a sanctuary in East County in October. 225 horses, 265 cats, and God knows how many dogs. His incompetent officers failed to see the cruelty that existed in the barn because he failed to brief them prior to the visit. I handed him this case on a silver platter, and he blew it big time. Cruelty was observed, however, by two women who gained access via a court order the day after the DAS visit. DAS even paid my friend for her report. Deputy DA Eric Bodnar has all of the evidence. It's overwhelming, and yet he refused to secure a warrant. I'm requesting another deputy DA be assigned to this case. A warrant must be issued for future investigation under removal of numerous horses suffering a slow, painful death at this facility. Joel, this animal cruelty is happening in your district. Matthew has been briefed, but so far, there's nothing from your office. You were very good at accepting money from my family for your political campaign, but you don't want to reciprocate and step up when it matters. And Jim Desmond, both Darren and Chase are very familiar with this case. Yet no action from your office either. Your friend Phil Pace runs a horse rescue. He's passionate about animals. We can't say the same for you. So Phil gives me permission to tell you that he won't be funding your campaign moving forward as you've done nothing to help the animals either. DAS are also letting down many dogs at the shelters. They stopped the dog stay-out program at Carlsbad and transferred many dogs from this more modern facility to the older, grungy Bonita, where there aren't enough volunteers to even walk dogs daily. Some dogs are lucky if they get out once a week, and they live on concrete floors with no bed or a toy. feces are not picked up frequently, and dogs were observed to have green algae in their water. Volunteers that whistle blow are bullied or fired. So are employees. Uthanasia numbers are up since Maurice's arrival. He fails to communicate with rescue partners. Advertise dogs on news channels. Ian Borelli needs to go. They're both totally unqualified.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Dora Fahim, president and founder of Los Angeles Alliance for Animals. I would like to officially state that the County of San Diego has become a hub of criminal activity and lack of enforcement and-- activity and lack of enforcement and prosecution. At the end of March, another horse allegedly died on Deborah Barclay's property. What actions does Director Von Maurice and Assistant Director Rachel Borelli take, considering she has no qualifications for her position, having only worked as a volunteer coordinator and never, ever held a management role? Their solution seems to be to close out the case simply because Deborah Barclay was unreachable. This reflects deeply poorly on the standards upheld by Von and Rachel. Additionally, I would like the Board to note that I have never met Rachel, or Von, or spoken to them, so there is no personal reason for any bias against them. My statements are based solely on the evidence being presented, which I believe would stand up in court and indicates violations of California law. I'm asserting only facts, not opinions. The Board needs to recognize that after more than a year, the problem persists. When will the actions be taken to hold these spreading alleged lies and gaslighting accountable on this issue? When will the horses and dogs on Barclay's property be removed? When will you be taking the issue of violations of animal cruelty statutes, which take in mind are much stronger than human laws? Seriously, honorable Board of Supervisors. Newly elected LA County District Attorney Nathan Hoxman seems to be taking action, who recently filed 25 new animal cruelty cases with 18 felonies. Where will you? When will you? Thank you for your valuable time.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Ann Riddle, and I would add my voice to Gopher Canyon Road being a scary road and it needs all the reconstruction roadwork that it can get, and the lighting is horrible up there, that we haven't had some really major tragic accident out there. Literally heavenly intervention is best, as I can tell. I just called in to reiterate some of the comments I made yesterday to Consent Item 3 regarding the receipt by UCSD of funds to do research from the CDC regarding, among many things, health disparities and the role it plays in poor public health here in our county, something that's a high priority for you. And I ask you to reconsider moving forward with marijuana storefronts and other businesses, particularly cultivation out there in the back country. Nothing creates more health disparity than encouraging the smoking and vaping of, in this case marijuana, but tobacco as well, but this is marijuana we're talking about. Nothing makes health deteriorate faster than the inhalation of a smoked or baked product. And the notorious marijuana storefronts are for picking on neighborhoods of concern to set up shop. And that type of visibility and promotion, it just threatens and sabotages and diverts the lives of our young people who see it in their neighborhood and think that smoking or vaping or just getting high is acceptable as some form of relaxation or diversion. Let's put a pause on this concept, and let's give it more time, because the research is certainly rolling in to suggest this is an unwise move. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to our next speaker.
This is Peggy Walker. Noting earlier speakers, I too came to urge you to listen to loud and clear opposition to the proposed new marijuana business expansion. No one said it better than Fallbrook Planning Group Chair Eileen Delaney, who stated, "We don't want any cannabis program. We want no project." Many planning groups and residents are voicing strong opposition to the plan. This would visit a blast of marijuana businesses on the community, from retail sales to cultivation and manufacturing, even on site consumption. But the collective message is, no, this doesn't work for us. County residents clearly choose environmental and public health, youth well-being, and retention of county ambience over cannabis industry profit and rural degradation. Highly concerning to us is the EIR that fails to address environmental issues that other jurisdictions say are unsolvable, even warning others to avoid the plight of toxic pesticides, poor regulation, and the persistent stink of pot that ruins neighborhoods. Overlooked is the soaring concern of toxic hazardous marijuana waste, a growing environmental threat that some say is unsustainable. This proposal comes amid reports of marijuana businesses failing across the state. Leading pack companies are facing lawsuits, selling assets, and failing to pay taxes. That demonstrates that not only is marijuana expansion unwanted, it's not economically smart. Really, this decision should be the decision of the people who live there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And since we only heard from four speakers, and we had our fifth speaker come and check in, I would like to call for Nick Littis. You have two minutes to address the Board.
My name is Nick Littis. I'm a decorated United States veteran of the United States Army Military Police Corps. I'm a model citizen. I'm a pillar of my community. The other day, two weeks ago, you had a gentleman here, who I guess is running a veterans clinic, and he had a gentleman come up. It was really, really disgusting. And this gentleman said, "Hi, I'm a drug addict. I'm a drug dependent, and I'm so grateful to this Caucasian man that's running this clinic that's housing me." I am an independent veteran. My home is one of the last minorities' homes in an older working-class home in my entire community. For 14 years, we've been singled out by your Code Enforcement Division for a storage violation. As you drive up into our home, there's 18 of these things documented. They're storage containers. Ours have been there for, we don't even know how long. They were there when we purchased our home. They contain the tools of our life and our livelihood. Your Code Enforcement Division is being run by criminals right now. Dahlia Lynch doesn't do anything about it. I don't know how involved she is. We know directly how involved two of your employees are. I can tell you this right now. You seem to focus a lot on people that are helpless. You need to leave the people alone. There's working class... Money is not our god. It's not everybody's god. I'm sure all of you are doing really, really wonderfully, and you're stuffing millions into your pockets. We bought our home at an affordable price. We're now surrounded by multimillion-dollar homes, but many, many are being lived in by people that live here, that make $200,000 to $300,000. Mrs. Lynch makes $25,000 a month. It's... I can't even fathom that. You know, if you run a 7-Eleven...
Thank you, sir. That's your time.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Lawson, remember, that concludes the request for non-adjournant public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. We now proceed with the formation of the Consent Agenda. That's items 1 through 6 today. All the items on the Consent Agenda are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Members of the public can comment once my colleagues have an opportunity to make their comments or pull any items they'd like to pull for discussion. Superintendent Anderson, do you have any... Anything to pull or any comments? Sorry, sorry. Okay. Superintendent Desmond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. I've got three comments on the consent calendar. First one is item number 2. This is the habitat restoration in the Tijuana River Valley. This is, I guess, for Navy mitigation, where they're going to be doing mitigation on county-owned land managed by the Department of Public Parks and Rec. It's currently has some dilapidated structures, debris, and non-native plants in the Tijuana River Valley. This is for $2.4 million. So I got some concerns on this one. I'm not even... I'm not convinced it's safe right now to have people working in the Tijuana River Valley. We've got five... I've talked to the IBWC group, that we've got 5 million gallons of sewage coming via the Tijuana River every day into San Diego County. So I'm concerned about the reports of hazardous gases, bacteria levels, gastrointestinal issues, and we're going to send people in there to clean out dilapidated structures. You know, to me, this is... The big problem in the Tijuana River is, in valley, is sewage coming across the border. This is like... This is like your toilet's overflowing in the house, and you decide it's time to paint the bedroom. It's like, no, we've got to deal with the sewage issue. So I get it that this is the Navy. They want... They need this mitigation land for able to use their bases. As a Navy veteran, I get it, but I want to make sure we got our priorities straight as far as the Tijuana River Valley. Yes, there's invasive species there. There's debris that needs to be cleaned out, but I'd really like to see, because Tijuana has not been able to get their house in order and fix their failing sewer infrastructure, and we continue to have to spend millions on the San Diego side cleaning them up. I was really considering voting against this item, but at the end of the day, I just want to make my concerns clear, that this... We got to focus on and get our priorities straight. I realize it's Tijuana's problem. I realize it's a federal issue, but going in and cleaning out invasive species in a sewer-infested area, to me, is not the best plan of action. But anyway, that's my comments on item 2. On item 4, I want to give a shout out to the Department of Public Works for getting things done. I couldn't think of a better example. You know, our roads, our roads and our infrastructure are really what people see, what people ride on, and we get comments about as well. Several years ago, the Board put forward a goal of having a PCI, which is what Pavement Condition Index, of 70. What we found out is, you know, it goes from 0 to 100, so whatever the pavement index is. If we can keep it at 70, then it's the most cost-effective. We don't have to spend way too much money trying to fix it later or provide too much maintenance or whatever, keeping it completely, I guess, as smooth as we can. But so we aim for a PCI index of 70. I think at that point in time, it was in the low 60s. Right now, we're at 69, and we're on track to get to that 70. So I want to say thank... This is a major win for the unincorporated areas and for our roads, bridges, and infrastructure, so I'm glad to see this, and I hope we keep marching, we get to that 70 goal, and be able to keep it. And then on item 5, this one is about testing, again, back to sewage, testing beach water, the beach and bay water quality. It's an annual agreement with the state, where the state provides us funds for beach water testing. However, the criteria for the beaches have to be... The first criteria, they have to be visited by more than 50,000 people a year, and that they're adjacent to a storm drain or that flows during dry weather. Well, the only beaches that meet that criteria are beaches north of Coronado, as stated in the board letter. And I know we do do the additional testing of... At Imperial Beach, and we do do the testing at Coronado, and along the strand, we do that, but we're not getting any money from the state to do that. So I was wondering if we could go back to this... I'll be supporting the item, but if we go back to the state and say, hey, we'd like to either get more money or shift some of those dollars, but to be able to have state dollars for testing of those particular beaches as well. South... Coronado itself and south, I think it's going to be much more... We'd get a lot better indication of what's going on with our beaches instead of only the ones that meet the criteria that are north of Coronado. So with that, I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Monk, may I step?
No comments. I will move the Consent Agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Superintendent Monk, may I step? I'm happy to second, and I just wanted to make a comment on item 2 as well, which I actually think it's a great news item. I just appreciate that. We're continuing to make the investments to clean up the Tijuana River Valley, and it's not enough, but it's something, and every little bit helps. And we got to, you know, obviously keep doing the work, so glad to have some help from the military in that. Hopefully, we can keep getting more support. So with that, let's go to the public speakers.
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson. Remember, we do have 10 holders who request to speak on items on the Consent Agenda, three individuals in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. For any of the individuals that requested to speak on the items on the Consent Agenda by phone, please dial into the conference line now, using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. You will then have two minutes to address the Board. If you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record. Also, when speaking, please identify which items on the Consent Agenda you were speaking about. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, allegedly Audra, Caesar Javier, and Ilka Weston.
My person uses the name Audra. It's always good to hear people coming in and exposing stuff. That's always fun. So for the underground utilities, it's a wonder what this is doing to disturb the ground and cause potentially more earthquakes and different things. But Jim, I appreciate what you said about number 2. I think that that was smart, but I still think that you should probably vote no, because it doesn't make sense to spend $2.35 million on this when the problem still exists. So are they actually going to go and use this and utilize this area? Or is it going to be that they're just going to go clean it up and then potentially have to do it again by the time that they come back and want to utilize it? So I mean, maybe we need to look and make sure that that's going to be money well spent. And then with the resurfacing, you know, I feel like you guys wait too long before you actually go and mitigate it. The deterioration is, you know, increases the longer you wait, and I don't know what this software to determine that is. How much do we spend on that? Probably a really a lot of money. But if we're not keeping up with it, it just... I mean, you're going to have to do more of the work as opposed to resurfacing it. And when we're talking about weekly monitoring of this water, I mean, I think that's important, but also this is coming in its agreement with the State Water Resources Control Board. I think that name says it all. But then for your fixed... Your fees that you want to increase for agricultural weights and measures, you know, it's just interesting when you see how much you guys spend on salaries and everything. It's 86% of the fixed cost, and then there's 14% for operational needs. So it seems like we pay a lot of money to give people a job, but then the services aren't really being provided. So it's just really sad to see how much money we spend on that, and then we have to pay more money on the back end just to get the service that you're supposed to provide in the first place.
Thank you. And not seeing Caesar or Parita in the board chamber, we will go ahead and hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. Again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and then you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
I'm going to follow here. So yeah, my comment regarding Consent Calendar is that, you know, regarding the underground works, when that rumble that we had the other day, I call it a result of the explosion of wherever the epicenter was, there were parts of our county of people who didn't feel it. And it's so funny, because one particular spot, I won't name it, but one of my girlfriends was like, "I didn't feel anything." I'm like, "Are you kidding me?" So lo and behold, there comes in some, I don't know if it's the city or the county, I'm sure it was the city of San Diego, going in and doing some roadwork, digging in some stuff. It's just, it's so obvious, but it's obvious only to the ones who are paying attention. Also, we wanted to comment regarding the Department of Public Works. As we speak, this department that Joel, I mean Jim, just gave a shout out to, is uprooting flowers in bloom in my community. I pulled over, asked the guy, "What are you guys doing? It's spring. Like, why don't you guys just wait until the summer?" He's like, "I know." He's like, "I'm telling you." I'm like, "Yeah, this is government. This is government." I have the video. I'm going to post it on my Instagram. Y'all can see it. It's ridiculous. Not even the people who work for the county understand the county. I'm like, that's it. I mean, just a waste of money when it could be going towards other things like Tijuana, or, I mean, even though we shouldn't be paying for that shit, but honestly, it's just so backwards, and it's so retarded, and you guys are all just clueless, honestly. I mean, very clueless. And I say this out of love, okay? Extremely out of freaking touch. Done.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Paul Bone.
Paul Bone, Habitat Restoration. $100,000 to restore each acre? That is a lot. With all of the other problems in the TJ River Valley, I think it's unfortunate to do Habitat restoration, especially though since it might simply be messed up by future repair or construction or super fund stuff, which people keep threatening, and that you haven't set up a trust fund for this money, which was awarded last year, is ridiculous. Good luck using this money, better than letting it sit idle, I guess. Levees for street lighting, et cetera. Hey, looks like good levy or fee raise and R S F might paper that half basketball court at Jess Martin Park. But thanks for, due to landscape maintenance district zone two, and to the street lighting people for holding off on the fee increase in this time of economic uncertainty. Formation of underground utilities, I think it's about time. Overhead utilities are inherently hazardous, and the more that we put underground, the better, especially, especially things like battery energy storage, which you guys seem to specialize in putting them in high fire zones. Looks good. Approved projects proposed to be funded by Senate Bill One, the highway stuff, but looks good. I'm glad to see a fair number of roads in Borrego are being resurfaced. It gets pretty dusty out there. Five, agreement with the California Water.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
I, per, per the consent agenda, item two, I thank the board for the proposal, and I am in favor of it. I will slightly push back on something Supervisor Desmond said, or at least he noted to, was, sir, you had mentioned that your concern of sending people into the Tijuana Valley to do restoration work, and your concern is health problems. That's why you don't want to send people in. Sir, people live there, day in and day out. So if your concern is people being in the toxic exposure, don't be worried about the ones you're sending in to do restoration work. Be concerned about the ones who are there every day, 24/7, who can't, who live there, who can't leave. Like, anyway, it seemed contradictory to me, but you did say you were in favor of it, so thank you for that. And, oh, I know I previously, I'd mentioned that I've, actually, I live north of 905, and I've never smelled it. Last week, I smelled it for my first time at my house. It was middle of the night, it came through, I was like, oh, and then it went away. I was like, oh, that's never happened before. And then, two nights ago, smell came through, middle of the night, and it didn't leave. I was like, oh, this has never happened before. And it just lingers, and it stays, and it stays. And then again last night, like, oh. So it's, problems growing. Yeah. And I did have something earlier for Don't Just a Public Comment. Unfortunately, I missed it.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Anne Riddle. I called in today to speak to consent item five regarding the State Water Resource Control Board and the Beach and Bay Water Quality Monitoring Program. I wasn't sure if you all knew about the Policy Research Center out at San Diego State University. Their center is for tobacco and environment. It's an intersection between our deep appreciation for our water environment here in San Diego County, as well as the role that tobacco plays in polluting our water. They recently did a study of the Mission, of Mission Base Kendall Frost Marsh Reserves, sorry, because of the amount of stormwater that flows into there, and how many salt marsh habitats are being destroyed because of this situation. What they found was a great many cigarette butts are finding their way into our waterways and into our marine environment, and they have found that cigarette butts are the single most littered item in San Diego, well, actually across the United States and worldwide. That's why a wonderful health policy and environmental policy that would improve the quality of our water and our precious marsh reserves would be a smoke-free public place policy in the unincorporated area. It's a wonderful strategy to improve the quality of not only the air, but of our water and our water systems. Perhaps now's the time to consider, while we're also looking at monitoring, let's look at some prevention strategies as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
How are you guys doing? A fine and lovely, lovely day. Yesterday's meeting was wonderful. Taught people how to commit voter fraud on your platform, so that when you guys go ahead and pretend it doesn't happen, I can point this platform. On second, and here's the thing about Tijuana River, why should they fix the problem? Did you consult with them when you told every single country to come over here? Our border is open? Screwing over Mexico, causing the cartel to get stronger? I think we owe Mexico to fix that problem, but you don't want to go ahead and do that. Now, why are we fixing all this stuff that we've been just sitting on for the past four years? Well, it's a simple reason. If that money just stays without being touched for a period of time, our board members figure out a way to go ahead and reallocate those funds. Now that we have a president that doesn't want that to happen, we are now seeing them actually do the shit that they were supposed to do for the past four years. Ain't that right, Tara? Right? Is that why that all the freeways are pretty much blocked every single night because you're finally going in and doing that? But how many times do you have to repave the same freeway to write, put new marks on the road so that the electronic cars could see the marks? That's really what all this is about, is so that we can get automated cars and we can get out of them. Here's the thing, you know, the fault line in the ocean is starting to move, which means tsunami is going to probably be hitting the West Coast. 1,000-foot tsunami, you could read that in a newspaper article, mostly on the North County and all that stuff, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to the big washout and you guys stopping people from being able to leave their houses or not having a car to get.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
My name is Kathleen Lippett. As an advocate of public policies that contribute to health, safety, and welfare of residents, it's demoralizing to see this board tinker around the edges in a performative attempt to telegraph concern for the environment or for the toxic exposures to anyone who lives near or around the Tijuana sewage problem. The U.S. has contributed some 80% of the approximate $650 to $895 million directed at addressing this Tijuana sewage problem, but there can be no other reason for having no improvement than the corruption on both sides of the border. This board continually indicates its care and concern for our neighbors to the south, but this shows the exact opposite, as well as for our own citizens. The marijuana industry that you continue to partner and collaborate with is also an environmentally destructive industry, and you and the board continues to ignore those, its environmental harms. You prioritize criminals with, and then you reach out to advocates for their history, their drug history experience, operators of marijuana businesses and marijuana social equity applicants, to help other, others of those who have drug histories. No one should be helped into the drug history, least of all someone who is trying to recover from their drug history. They do not need to be put back in the same set and setting that caused them problems to begin with, and our unincorporated communities do not want these businesses. But it also seems that there must be some kind of.
Thank you. Your time is up. Anne, Vice Chair Lawson Rumor, that concludes public comment on the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Montgomery step, and I have, I've seconded the motion. Please call vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Rumor, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present and voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We now move on to item seven. This is the second consideration and adoption of an ordinance for cost recovery for fees and deposits related to land development for fiscal year '25 and '26, and a related SECA exemption. Do we need a staff presentation?
We have very few staff.
Okay, great. We'll go to staff, and then we'll go to public comment.
On May 7th, the board approved the first reading of the ordinance for the Land Development Cost Recovery Package and set the hearing for consideration and adoption for today. The board also directed staff to provide an update during today's hearing on innovations that are achieved through updates to fee adjustments, specifically additional innovations that we can implement with the input of industry that will help housing projects move forward faster. The land development team has been tracking the cost savings with process improvements and innovations resulting in annualized cost containment of roughly $2.7 million that would otherwise be part of our fee increases. Examples of innovations we've deployed through collaboration with stakeholders include over half our building permit volume being processed online, a self-certification program for six permit types, a guaranteed review time program, self-service reports that save county staff time and money as well as applicants, mobile inspection for our field workers, and we're currently averaging 29 days for our first round plan check of building plans. For upcoming projects, we'll be deploying a new set of pre-approved plans for homes. This will save customers time and money with private design costs. We're finalizing a program to allow tiny homes on wheels. We'll be deploying new online tools for applicants to submit right-of-way permits online to improve efficiency. Since our hearing on May 7th, we've engaged with industry to explore expanding our existing self-certification program and look for opportunities to convert discretionary permits to ministerial. These are longer-term projects that will work with stakeholders to refine the scope and details as well as to identify funding. This completes the update, and staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to the public, oh, Supervisor Desmond, would you like to ask a question? Okay. We will go to public comment, and then we will go to the board.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Rumor. We have nine total requests to speak, three individuals in person, and six requesting to speak by phone. Also, I'd like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For any individuals that are requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. Go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, is called, please come forward and stand on the arrows until it's your turn to speak. You'll then have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward the following individuals, allegedly Audra, Caesar Javier, and Ilka Weston.
Look at that, two minutes. My person uses the name Audra. It's always interesting to see how you guys talk about stuff, and, you know, you're talking about salary increases and benefits, which, you know, you may not get full cost recovery for this after the increases, which is pretty crazy, because it's like, we can't even provide a service, but we're talking about giving people raises, so then there's no money to provide the service. It's just like, I feel like we're on a hamster wheel, just going round and round and going nowhere. And you're saying that this is going to help housing move forward faster if you increase the fees. Is that true? Probably not, right? It's just busy work, or, you know, lip service to make people think that, you know, you're actually going to be providing it quicker when, in fact, we see how many homes we need and we're never going to catch up. But also, I'm wondering about these self-certification and self-service reports, so people can submit a report on themselves and just, you guys accept it? I don't know. And then they can self-certify themselves? It's just, I guess that makes it go quicker. But also, these tiny homes on wheels, how cool is that? Maybe the homeless can get those, and they can move them around downtown or wherever they need to go, right? But it's kind of like a mobile home. Why don't we just call them that? Mobile tiny homes, you know? It's kind of a good catch. But who are those going to be for? Just wondering. Are we just talking about doing it so we can provide people with just more options? I mean, we might as well dig them a hole in the ground and be like, you can live there, but we're going to have to charge you for it, and if you don't pay it, we'll just bury you there. It'll be fine. And then we can probably, you know, just get some more money for that, because we'll have somebody come out and do that service, but we got to give them a raise first. So it's good to see you guys are always giving people raises. Not everybody, though. There's some people that get left out of that, which that's pretty messed up, but as long as you guys get to fill your pockets, so fantastic.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Caesar and Purita, we have a stake on this land use or variance. Please think deeply, rationally. We have algorithm, as I may have to explain to you. Think, so that our god of decision-making will do the right thing. You're not telling the truth. We expect your professionalism, engineers, land surveyors, name it. You have the capability. Right? Example, Rule 11, code air pollution control district. They're even encroaching something about business, about variance. They exempted 20 businesses, which is supposed to be going through you to examine whether it is rationally safe, location, construction, operation, and even alteration. They have to pay. You have to collect. And now, you're talking about define the problem so we could solve it. Don't confuse the public. In our community, we have urban planners, we have soldiers, we have community leaders, we have urban planners, to say it again. We have all in that community predominantly Asian-Americans and Latino-Americans, only three white, and they're the ones spewing poisonous gas we breathe. Is that land use? When you say land use, we mean all projects program should be in accord with safety, health, and welfare of the public. Are you doing that? Come on, judges, forgive me. I have to shout, because we are hurt. You're hurting us. We have the Constitution. You have to abide with this mandate. Although it's an experiment, it works.
Thank you. Your time's up. Not seeing Ilka in the board chamber. We will now move to our callers. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted. You will then hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. We will go ahead and begin with our first caller. Paul, it is your turn to speak, if you can hear us. Paul? All right. Not seeing any responsiveness from Paul. We will go to our next speaker.
Let me go ahead and put what the county said in layman's terms. The county has been applying a bunch of fees to individual homeowners in order to pay their prep projects, but they also want to go ahead and have these housing developments, so they cut deals with the corporations, reducing their fees, basically all the additional fees that we have to pay. If you're a corporation, you don't have to pay those fees. how much expendable income the people have, and how much they could tax out of that. So if you ever wonder why we keep on having new rules and regulations and why corporations don't need to follow those, it's because they carve out exceptions, which they are proud to say in front of everyone. Matter of fact, they don't have to pay the fire protection as much of normal people do, because, you know, they're taking away our land and giving it to basically government control or corporation control. You know, I don't know what is the difference between the two anymore, because it looks like California went completely corporate, and the people mean shit to them. To the point that I could teach people how to commit butter fraud, and you guys want to pretend I'm not even saying anything about that. Like, you want to pretend it doesn't exist? That anyone can't fill out a registration card for someone else in order to gain their access to their ballot and--
Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go into our next caller.
Thank you. Paul the Bold. Tiny homes on wheels, huh? Sounds like the FEMA trailers you just used. So you propose to increase fees presumably so you can continue your wasteful spending habits, excessive contingency fees and equity giveaways. You want to raise fees by an average of 4.5 to 10%. Very inflationary. And eliminate the homeowner relief act program, which provides loans or grants to eligible homeowners for minor home and health and safety repairs. Then you have the nerve to say these increases in PDS and DBW may not fully address cost increases based on future negotiated labor agreements, which is basically guaranteeing future financial mayhem for us, because you cannot negotiate in the interest of all the people of this county. In other words, more shoddy and dangerous homes, increasing wildfire danger to all of us, and financial pressure. And then you surrender to withhold services you're already planning to cut. Get a grip. I suggest that the first thing is to share the pain and cut your salaries, but maybe reduce the number of managers at the county a bit. And I'd like an independent audit first, by the way, to verify that all this county's BS programs are not wasteful, like all these corporate giveaways. Put your money where your mouth is, sir. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Gosh, wouldn't that be nice, Paul the Bold? Independent audits, it'll never happen, because they are, in fact-- This is Consuelo, by the way-- --wasteful and reckless on our dime. And it's just, you know, gosh, it is money here, money there, and, you know, you got things being done that don't need to be done. The streets for the future supposed earthquakes, shake the hell out of those areas. Yeah, it's just unfortunate that, you know, it's like you guys, like, who polices you? You know? It's like you got us, the same few concerned citizens, and throughout the county, too, because I understand there's like, it's not just, I mean, people just are turned off by you guys because of the fact that-- And don't blame us. They appreciate what we're doing, except for the state of slaves who are like, oh my God, why are they, why do they even call in? Yeah, because you guys need to realize, because nobody else is telling you, everybody else vouchs you, everybody else calls you honorable, when you are nothing, you are anything but. You don't work for the people. You don't work for the people. You don't work for the freaking people. It's so sad. And yet you give your pets on the back, and I accomplished this, and I accomplished that. It's just a big old freaking, you know, all you do is just like stroke each other's egos when you're up there. It's just so sad, and you have nothing to show for it, except for our homelessness being up, suicides are up, freaking, it's just crazy. It is crazy being awake in these times that everyone is so asleep. Anyways, that's all I got on this stupid item.
All right. Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond?
Well, thanks, Ellen. Thanks for the effort on this item and for bringing back enhanced services that we can offer, as opposed to just raising the, raising the fees on the, on items. And I've been reading a letter from the BIA that they were happy that you met with their membership regarding potential options. And what I kind of get out of their letter that they just wrote is the ministerial permits and self-certifications are kind of what were on their top list, and of his ways we can work, work on those efforts. Can you, is there a reasonable time to ask, is six months or a year or something like that, we can ask to come back and see how we're doing on these enhanced items that we're working with the industry on?
Supervisor, we can return and report back. Some of those will have an additional cost that we'll want to report back to you all on and identify, you know, if and how we can reallocate funds based on the BIA's priorities and the building, excuse me, and the board's priorities. So we can report back to you. We may need some additional funding to make sure that those priorities do move forward.
Well, I get it on the funding, but I'm just looking for the advancements on the enhanced services that we're going to be working on with industry.
We can report back. I'd like to propose that we report back during the housing workshop in the fall, where we can talk globally about what we are doing on housing and how we're working with our industry partners and community.
Okay. I'm going to be looking for buzzwords, self-certification and ministerial permits. So, thank you. I'll move the item.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, I'm happy to second it. Motion by Supervisor Desmond, seconded by myself. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay. Thank you. We're now moving on to item eight. This is the second consideration and adoption of the cost recovery proposal related to fees and deposits in the Department of Environmental Health and Quality for fiscal year 2025, 2026, waiving Board Policy B29 and sequoia, and a sequoia exemption. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Vice Chair, we do have a very brief presentation reporting back on what the board directed previously on May 7th.
Good morning, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, members of the board. I'm Heather Benomo, Division Director with the Department of Environmental Health and Quality. On May 7th, the board approved the first reading of the ordinance for the DEHQ Cost Recovery Proposal and set the hearing for consideration and adoption for today, May 21st. The board also directed staff to provide an update during today's hearing on upcoming innovations specific to our septic system program that support housing. The DEHQ program for supplemental treatment systems make building possible on lots that were previously unbuildable because a conventional septic system could not meet the regulations. Over the last three years, the septic system program was rebuilt to better support housing and increase customer service by processing projects faster. Two staff were added to deliver on stakeholders' number-one priority, which was meaning guaranteed review times of 30 days on all septic projects. This has consistently been done for over a year now, as well as offering a 15-day review for workforce housing and a five-day review for affordable housing. We've decreased our customer service inquiry response time down to one to three days, and the program vacancy rate has been reduced from 63% to 0%. These changes are the primary cost driver for the fee increases over the last three years. Each year, we continue to look for efficiencies and innovations to identify cost savings. In the upcoming year, we will focus on the supplemental treatment systems, which treat waste before discharging to the ground, allowing for housings or additions to be built on soil that cannot accommodate a traditional septic system. And we will engage stakeholders to analyze options to restructure this permit and fee. This concludes the presentation. We're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have nine total requests to speak, two individuals in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in opposition. For any individuals that request to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using this, or now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with our in-person speakers. You'll have two minutes to address the board, and I'd like to invite forward Allegedly Audra and Cesar Javier.
My person uses the name Audra. I love how it's food and hazardous waste in one little bunch. I mean, might as well just be the same thing. I don't think there's a difference, especially with what we get and how many toxic foods that are just on the shelves. But that's okay, because there's a depopulation agenda, which, you know, nobody wants to acknowledge, but it's working very well. You guys are doing good, as you talk about, you know, population decreases, not right now, but before. Anywho, and so this is interesting, some more salary increases, which is cool to, you know, further control people. But with the solid waste, I'm wondering if we cannot treat that, but we can just give it back to the people, because that's sustainable? And so, like I was saying yesterday, fecal therapy is actually really good for you, so I feel like, why waste an opportunity? Right? And then maybe we can decrease the fees if we do that? And then I'm thinking, you know, because this is a 5% increase across the board, good job, you guys, you know, really robbing from the people. I have a penny in my bag. Do you want it? You can put it in the fund. That might be helpful. And also, this PCR testing, this reminds me back in the days of COVID, I mean COVID, or whatever it was, the invisible killer dot that was going around killing people, or just, you know, encouraging them to go take a bioweapon, which many people did, and like, Jim, you have some issues because of that. But do you remember when we were talking about the PCR test not working, and you were still using it because of the money? I feel like we're still in that place. And how cool was it to do, like trick people into doing anal testing as well? Right? They were doing that just for COVID. But then we got monkeypox, and they did vaginal, anal, and oral testing, all at the same time, I'm pretty sure, and probably just reusing those tests. But it's great when we use things that really aren't effective, just like you guys aren't effective. Well, you are, because you do a really good job destroying things, but, and we pay for that, too. So nice.
Cesar and Purita, aging, independent services. How could you solve problem when you cannot even put the right title in your enterprise? Why do you have to use health? You focus only on environmental aspects. Let the health be in the health and human services. You're confusing the public. We approach you many times. Hey, we are hurt because of that environmental injustice in our community. What did you say? We recommended the Air Pollution Control District. Who has the tasking of environmental justice? And now they are embracing climate change action warriors. And what is the mission of the director? Collect fees. And what is the duty of the governing board chair? Craft the laws when they just sign it without even understanding what the staff of the Air Pollution Control-- Now, where is sanity here? Where is rationality? Where is algorithm? Engineering word. Do you understand that, sirs? Mommy step. What's happening to our city hall? What is happening to District 4? What is happening to District 9? What is happening to District 2? What is happening to District 8? Come on. Is it health and environmental? It's environmental enterprise, and you should protect the people, commit to the health moguls, wishes, the health and human services. You are duplicating your war. You are confused. Mom, sirs. Step down now, Montgomery. Step down now, Mom Reamer. You're destroying San Jacins. This is not an ordinary populated area. This is the home of the brave soldiers and their--
Your time is up. Now we will hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hi. Paul the Bold. So you want to build septic systems on formerly unbuildable lots? So the homeowners pay the increased fees, and then extra construction costs, because you know they'll break down a lot quicker. I mean, they're on basically unstable ground, and that the Department of Environmental Health will answer calls quicker. Wow. Sounds like more rounder up and finger pointing and saying no a lot, that's a lot quicker. Basically, it's the same script as before, but an average 5% increase. High contingencies, escalated costs, basically pulling back the equity giveaways you did a bit less, and we're still inflationary. This time, it looks like you're targeting food and housing for nonprofits, which means low-income people will be squeezed once more. Just how stupid do you think we are? How useless is all this equity crap you purvey? Darts and figures would tell us nothing. We don't know. Actions would divide us. And now you're basically telling the low-income people, all of them, to go to hell. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Um, Consuelo here. Okay. So, yeah, don't give them any idea, Cesar or Audra. Fecal therapy has been found to be beneficial, so they'll definitely be omitting that as a possibility. And 100% to Paul the Bold, purposely, entirely purposely inflationary. And they'll continue, because the majority aren't paying attention. So, that's where we're at, and yeah, wasteful, nothing healthy about that. Anything positive to say about this item? Tara, you're looking cute today. I like your outfit, like your earrings. That's about it. I'm done.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, not seeing any other callers called in, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions? We have a motion from Supervisor Montgomery Stepp. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second from Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay. We now go to item nine. I will let my colleague introduce this as his item. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Appreciate it. This is to promote and expand sustainable cattle grazing. Before we open up for discussion, I just want to take a moment and share a few thoughts. I've been hearing from the agriculture groups in my district, especially ranchers, about growing concerns related to the increasing regulatory burden on farming. One issue that came up is a requirement for grading and clearing permits in connection with cattle grazing. So at one time, such requirements may have been appropriate, particularly to address the impacts of poorly managed grazing practices on the local ecosystems. However, over the past several decades, ranchers have made significant advances in sustainable land management, and many rotate grazing and maintain limited herd sizes. These practices allow grazed areas to recover, often resulting in stronger and more resilient landscapes as the cattle graze. They apply fertilizer, grind it into the ground, and the area comes back even, even better in many cases. So ranchers also play an important role in the land conservation. Through voluntary programs like PACE, they partner with the county to permanently preserve land for agricultural use, helping to prevent conversion to more intensive development. So when viewed in a broader tech context, cattle grazing can offer--
district, especially ranchers, about growing concerns related to the increasing regulatory burden on farming. One issue that came up is a requirement for grading and clearing permits in connection with cattle grazing. So at one time, such requirements may have been appropriate, particularly to address the impacts of poorly managed grazing practices on the local ecosystems. However, over the past several decades, ranchers have made significant advances in sustainable land management, and many rotate grazing and maintain limited herd sizes. These practices allow grazed areas to recover, often resulting in stronger and more resilient landscapes. As the cattle graze, they apply fertilizer, grind it into the ground, and the area comes back even better in many cases. So ranchers also play an important role in the land conservation. Through voluntary programs like PACE, they partner with the county to permanently preserve land for agricultural use, helping to prevent conversion to more intensive development. So when viewed in a broader context, cattle grazing can offer real land management co-benefits. It helps suppress invasive plant species, reduces wildfire fuel loads, and supports healthy nutrient cycling in soils. So supporting a vibrant ranch industry also contributes to our local food system, keeping beef production local, and reducing our reliance on external supply chains. So I believe we should not only acknowledge the valuable contribution the ranchers make to our communities, but we should consider ourselves fortunate to have a strong ranching presence in the county. So today, I'm asking staff to explore options. We're not approving anything today except for exploring options for exempting sustainable cattle grazing from the grading and clearing ordinance, and to evaluate opportunities to expand the use of county-owned properties for local ranching operations. So look forward to hearing the comments, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to move the item at this point. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Rimmer. We have 13 total requests to speak, six individuals in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive 20 e-commerce on this item. 18 were in favor, and two were in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. Pursuant to the board's rules, since we have 10 or more speakers, you'll have one minute to address the board today. So we will go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium. Again, you will have one minute to address the board, and if you could please state your name for the audio record, and I will be calling individuals in groups of three. I'll invite forward the first three individuals, allegedly Audra, Andy Lyle, and Cesar Javier.
All right, can you restart my time? Thanks. My person uses the name Audra, so this is interesting. I feel like this doesn't fit into the climate action plan with all of the gas that comes from these cows. So it's kind of like defeating your guys' purpose. So what I was thinking, instead of using them, we could use homeless, just, you know, put them to work out in the fields. Also, we have children. There's a lot of children that could be used, because I almost feel like that's an abuse of cattle. And we tend to like to abuse children in the county, and also the homeless. So what better way to like get the best out of them than to just have them go grazing? You could even just have them outside here in Waterfront Park doing that job. And then maybe people won't want to come and like have them come to their property as well. I don't know. I just feel like we got to get the best use out of them, and not just sexual abuse. You know what I mean? Like, any kind of labor, it's good.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Andy Lyle, and I'm here with the San Diego County Farm Bureau. A quick point of clarification on the e-commerce. I believe the two that were in opposition, it looked like the comments were supportive. They may have clicked the wrong button there. The Farm Bureau has the privilege of representing family farms and ranches in our county, which contribute to local sustainable food production. Not only that, but they help create a net benefit to the local environment. One of the benefits of animal grazing is improved soil health and structure. Livestock manure adds organic matter and nutrients to the soil. Even the animals' hooves contribute to healthy ecosystem. Hoofprints naturally disturb the surface of the soil, which helps incorporate plant material and seeds into the soil. The practice of rotational grazing creates soil that is porous and ready to receive rainfall in a way that reduces runoff and erosion and encourages water infiltration. When pastures are given... Sorry, I thought I had two minutes.
No, we had more than 10 speakers. Sorry about that. Cesar, it's your turn. And as Cesar's coming forward, I'll call the final three speakers in person. Dana Groot, Joel Kramer, Katie Ostrander.
Cesar and Purita. For one minute, corruption equals monopoly plus discretionary minus accountability. Algorithm says, shellman shelter, protection and sustainability of humans first. First, number one priority. Solution, let's move the animals from the Balboa Park, animals to Escondido, and let that open perhaps for grazing of cows, if that is your solution. We do not question clean food from meat. That's way wake at the back. Let's consider first the humans who needs a grazing area, clean pasture, and still water. Mom Rimmer, you smiled. You gave us hope. Man first, sir. And this is not for discussion here. It's easy job. Thank you.
Go ahead and go to our next speaker.
Morning, Supervisors. My name is Dana Groot, President of San Diego County Farm Bureau. In addition to the comments that Andy Lyle just delivered, I'd like to point out, he used the term rotational grazing. Modern, sustainable grazing practices do incorporate rotational practices to the extent that not all lands are grazed all the time. So the current grading ordinance prevents grazing without proper permitting if lands have not been grazed over a year or two or three period. And this seeks basically to, it's important that grazing be allowed without permitting, special permitting, if lands have not been grazed for a period of time, but they have been grazed and are considered developed agricultural property because they were grazed before. Thank you.
County Supervisors, my name is Joel Kramer. I'm the Director of Agricultural Programs at the Resource Conservation District of Greater San Diego County, and a member of the State Board of Forestry Range Management Advisory Committee. I'm here in support of the review of options to expand grazing in the county. This is something we collaborate with the county on through the Planning and Development Services Department on our Climate Smart Land Management Grant to demonstrate prescribed grazing in a responsible manner. Previous results have showed the resurgence of endangered species like burrowing owls, tricolored blackbirds, and the quino checker spot butterfly. Livestock like cattle, goats, and sheep are often more beneficial and less expensive than herbicides and mechanized equipment. Thanks to Supervisor Anderson for sending staff to an event with California Audubon last month discussing collaboration on this issue. And the state is actively promoting grazing on public lands through SB 675. So categorizing grazing as akin to grading would be a mistake and a missed opportunity. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Katie Ostrander, and I'm here today representing the San Diego County Cattle Women. I'm also a fifth-generation rancher from Warner Springs, which is in the northeastern part of the county in District Five. If you're not familiar with it, Warner Springs is a special place, one that has been in my family's care since 1922. For most of us, the most important asset isn't the cattle, but it's the land. It's the land that makes everything possible. It's the foundation of our operation for nearly a century, and it's the reason we're still in business today. Over the years, we've learned that a healthy land base is key to running a successful ranch. Our grazing practices are built around the idea that the land has to stay in good shape, not just for the cattle, but for the wildlife that depend on it. Whether it's native grasses that feed our herd, endangered Stephen kangaroo rats, or the golden eagle, we recognize that the land's ecosystem is fragile and interconnected. That balance is what we've been able to keep our operation going for so long.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Chair members of the board, Supervisors Dan Silver, Endangered Habitats League. We support a viable agricultural economy in San Diego. We are conceptually in favor of this, but note that there are harms as well as benefits to grazing. We would not want to see ordinance exemptions be a predetermined, preordained outcome. It's something that is, should be under consideration as an option. We would note that there would have to be strict best management practices and site selection criteria for this to be successful. We'd also suggest involving UC Agricultural Extension, and think it is much more practical to retain a rangeland consultant to assist with this, rather than assume that staff has the time and expertise itself. But we're generally supportive of moving forward and would look forward to working with the Farm Bureau and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hey, Gonswallow here. So let's see, review options to promote and expand sustainable cattle grazing in the Incorporated County. So if it's in the Incorporated County, what do you guys, I mean, if it's, I don't know enough about this, but if it is private cattle, then why are you guys even, why isn't even an item? Reviewing what options and, oh gosh, whatever. Jeez. It is insane that, government is just too big, honestly. It's just too freaking big. Like, get out of our cattle grazing business. Pay attention to the sheep that are homeless and just doing everything that you tell them to do. Pay attention to stuff like that, because that's what really needs to be addressed. Leave the cattle alone.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hi, Paula Bold. I can think of one thing. Ben Craig Nedwig and Deborah Barkley from any development in the grazing area, they might actually kill the cattle before they can do any good. Laugh line. But seriously, expanding sustainable cattle grazing in the county helps mitigate environmental challenges such as soil degradation, proliferation of invasive species, and wildfire risks. And that benefits us all. And we can and should encourage less harmful land practices. One thing that should be encouraged is the use of fire-resistant plants. Another thing is, do not use things like herbicides, which damage the environment. Use...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Gable here. I heard something about flame-resistant plants. Did you know, instead of using lithium, we could use hemp to make batteries, a plant substance? Curiosity, by pulling out a bunch of lithium in a certain part of the world, will that mess up our shield? Will that weaken our shield if we pull out all the minerals from one part of the world and then reposition them to the other position? Will that affect anything? Yeah, no, we'll forget about that, because there's a lot of money to be made digging up these minerals instead of just planting, you know, hemp, transforming that into batteries, and then we don't have to use slave labor. But Monica loves using slave labor, because she makes money off of people suffering. I mean, she loves it, as long as it's not happening here.
Your time is up. We will go to our next speaker.
Hi, this is San Marcos Mayor Rebecca Jones, and I just wanted to say that I definitely support reviewing options that will be helpful for the cattle grazing. So I think one of the things that government doesn't always do is, we don't always look at our processes and our policies. And I think it's always good to make sure that we are updated as much as possible. And cattle grazing feeds not only our community, but also helps our environment. So sustainable practices have definitely improved over time. So I think it's important for us to make sure we update these policies, making sure that we are helpful for the business community and helping our communities thrive. So I look forward to seeing all of the communities' inputs, and the experts getting their input into this new policy, and I look forward to it. So I thank you very much for looking at this, and I commend the board for looking into this and making sure that we are keeping everything available for our farmers to do the best that they can possibly do and have the best practices. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Rimmer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Desmond, do you have some further comments?
Yeah, just briefly to wrap it up. I think, you know, hopefully we get this come through. I would appreciate if staff would work with the Mr. Silver on the endangered habitat suggested changes. But I did get one pushback from, or a couple of pushbacks actually, from ranchers about a qualified rangeland management consultant to be retained. I don't know if that means each rancher has to retain one, or that county staff would retain one for input. I think it would be better if county staff did, because I found out they're very expensive, and there's only like two of them in the county. And so for each rancher to have to have that obligation might be cost prohibitive. But, so anyway, I'm hoping this actually opens a door later as well for goats, sheep, and other grazing animals for sustainable lands, and hopefully for less fuel for our fires. But thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment. I think that this is an interesting idea. I don't have any objections at all in principle. I just want to kind of, for county staff, ensure that we do have sufficient stakeholders, that we take into account anything that might not be on our radar, that we should consider. So certainly, the ranchers, I think that was clear from the board letter, the environmental community, all of this is already in the board letter. But just uplifting that this, that I don't want us to end up with some policies that don't make sense, because we haven't consulted with, you know, a broad enough group of stakeholders. And also, when you come back, it would be helpful if there are discrepancies or disagreements in terms of recommendations, if different stakeholder groups have different points of view. If you can highlight those, instead of just synthesizing and collapsing them, I think it would be helpful to understand where there might, where's there's convergences of viewpoints, but also if there's differences and disagreements, where those are and what those trade-offs are, so that we're at least as a board aware when we make those decisions. And I think the last thing I would just say is, I know you all have a tremendous amount to do, that Lou has a tremendous amount to do, that we've asked you to shorten wait times and speed up processing for land permits, and speed up processing for housing production, and faster, faster, faster. I think we've all been very committed here to housing and moving forward that, the sustainable land use framework, so we could fast-track our housing. I just want to make sure that you feel that this isn't going to take you off track, that you can continue on with all the other work, that this isn't going to kind of overwhelm that.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for the comment. Supervisor Desmond, we can complete both of those actions you originally requested. Thank you for the question. I appreciate that. We do feel that we can incorporate this in our current work on the grading ordinance. It will take additional staff hours. Cumulatively, over time, the more direction we receive, you know, the more impact of staffing resources. But we do believe that we can incorporate this initial exploration, and then we'll come back. And if it's a larger effort that needs to occur, we'll certainly let the board know what that entails and allow you to prioritize where our efforts should go.
That would be extremely helpful, because this is, I think, there's no objection at all in principle to this. I think it's great. I'm just trying to be very cognizant that I don't want our housing work to slow down, because, you know, you feel like other things have taken you off track. So just transparency to the board on kind of constraints and staff time, so we can help direct how to prioritize appropriately. But hopefully, we can do it all. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second by Supervisor Anderson. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Rimmer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present, voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We now resume with non-agenda public comment. Ryan, please call the remaining individuals that requested to speak during non-agenda public communication.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer. We do have six total, six requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. We have two individuals in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Again, for those that requested to speak by phone, now is the time to dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward. You will then have two minutes to address the board, and if you could please state your name for the audio record. And, okay, there we go. Like to invite forward Joel Kramer and Ilka Weston. And both don't see any movement in the chamber. So we will go ahead and go to the phone speakers. We do have one on the line. And just as a reminder, again, when it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hello, Mark Westenova. I apologize for not being there in person. I just wanted to make sure the clerk of the board received the email that I sent. Wasn't this past hour? Because, long story short, there's a photo that, two photos that I would like the board to see. Two items I was, should have brought in with me today to do some person. But long story short, just wanted to give some recognition to my grandmother who worked for the county for 19 years. And today, and yesterday, she awarded a 10-year certificate of like appreciation. And yesterday, different years, 1992 and then 1983, a 10-year award and a retirement award. And I would just like to tell her, thank you for her work for the county.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, not seeing any other callers called in, and the two individuals not in person, that's going to conclude non-agenda public communications this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're actually have moved, I think, faster than anticipated. So we will do the public speakers for closed session, then we will do adjournments, and then we will adjourn immediately into closed session. So I, we will just keep, keep rolling here. So do we have any speakers for closed session?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer. Item 20 on yesterday's General Legislative Session Agenda, our Closed Session Matters. The Closed Session Agenda includes three matters. Individuals that have requested to speak on Closed Session Matters must provide comments related to the matter listed in the Closed Session item. Otherwise, your comments will be considered off-topic. We do have four total requests to speak, one individual in person, three requesting to speak by phone. Again, for any of the individuals that request to speak on Closed Session Matters by phone, now is the time to dial into the conference line with the instructions that were provided to you. Begin with our in-person speaker, who is Audra.
Look at that, just right at the buzzer. It's great.
I have two minutes to address the board. Go ahead.
All right. My person uses the name Audra. What could this be? There are so many things, right, with anticipated litigation and with all of the propaganda of sexual abuse happening in San Diego? Wonder if it has anything to do with that? You know, I mean, there's still the five-year-old little girl that was raped by an illegal alien. Could be her, could be, you know, the hundreds of, you know, adults that were children that were at the Polensky Center that were sexually abused. It could be the children that are at the Polensky Center right now that are being sexually abused. It could be at other juvenile detention centers who are also being sexually abused. But wait a minute, that is not true, right, Jim? Because that doesn't happen in San Diego County. I mean, come on, that is such BS. I mean, nobody ever gets raped or abused, especially children, and especially not in the foster care system, right, and through CPS. And, you know, we have county council who defends the sexual predators. So I'm wondering if instead of like allowing them to sue for such craziness, why don't you countersue them? How about you do that and be like, this is BS. We're not going to allow you to defame San Diego. San Diego is an upright community. We don't sexually abuse kids. We just like to hire pedophiles, but that's not because they sexually abuse kids, right? How many times do I need to say sexually abuse children in San Diego County for it to matter? I'm just wondering. You know what I mean? You're closing your eyes, but you're complicit in it, right? Because you're defending the people that do it. Good for you. Oh, my gosh, I can't imagine being that person, or any of you who ignore it completely. When I posted my video about asking if you guys are pedophiles, everyone was saying yes.
We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Gonfalo here. So let's see, yeah. More solutions for possible closed session lawsuits. How about you guys start, or the county starts to actually start working for the people? That'll lessen any future possible liabilities. I had this written down from yesterday, but I'm not going to say what I have to say on here, because that's kind of mean. I'm trying to be nicer. Let's see, it's really hard, though. What else do I have? I'm going to recycle something. Let's recycle something. Let's recycle. Okay, could possibly be the fact that you guys are still spraying Roundup within our unincorporated areas today. Like I mentioned earlier, you have people working. Maybe it's because of the wasteful spending you do, having people work in the spring while flowers are in bloom and the bees are doing what they're supposed to do. But hey, there's not going to be any flowers there thanks to government. You guys act and act and act like you care for the environment, and your actions speak way louder than your words. Let's see, what else could it possibly be? It could possibly be that, yeah, you are in fact always in violation of the Brown Act, because quite frankly, you have people like myself calling in, and I can play and say whatever it is that I want. Hey, yeah, I got an idea. Let's see, what else? Yeah, there's just too much, too much, too much.
Right, your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Paula Bold, you still haven't put the case summary into a format we can simply download to a text file. And I would appreciate a 10-word, that is, short summary of the cases. And I really wish I knew what labor negotiators wanted. Hope they can summarize their concerns so they're dealt with in one shot and so they don't come back every meeting and take up all our time. How many of the 150 odd cases relating to Polensky Center abuses will you fess up to? I mean, in his paid-to-play cases. And how much will you continually putting off discussion? How much will it cost us in money interest if not having the book totally thrown at you guys and our reputation that you don't care much? And holdover cases from the last meeting need to be resolved. They're too old. How about reporting on these two, like when the settlement is anticipated? Tara, I'm glad you wanted the pros and cons in the discussion of Item 9. I'd appreciate it in the board letters, too. Finally, if I quote what another speaker said and you call me off-topic, does that make me off-topic for prospectively ceding time or you for violating my free speech? I'd appreciate an answer, by the way. Thanks.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson-Rimmer, that concludes public comment on Closed Session Matters.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no adjournments, that now concludes the business before the board.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under Item 20 on yesterday's General Legislative Session Agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today. The next meeting of the Board of Supervisors will begin the budget hearing process, which will begin on Tuesday, June 3, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., when the board will receive a presentation on the fiscal years 2025 through '26 Recommended Operational Plan and receive public testimony on all areas of the budget. Second budget hearing is also scheduled for Monday, June 9, 2025, at 5:30 p.m.